Okay, it is now six thirty-two. We're gonna bring this meeting of the Longdale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call, please.
All right, good evening. Mayor Protem Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Mayor Pollan Miles.
Here.
Everyone is present.
Thank you, madam. A flag salute will be conducted by Councilwoman Shirley Cuevas and Doris Hoffman will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please stand. Please stand. Face the flag. Put your hand on your card. Ready to begin.
To the flag allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing.
I normally just pray, but tonight I'm gonna talk a little dab. My father was a Dutchman and we lived in nineteen forty-two in the town of Bellflower, which at that time was all Dutch. And us kids went to church or went to a school, at a school sponsored by the Dutch Reform Church. And we had to learn and memorize a lot of Bible verses all the time. When I was in the third grade, we were asked or told we had to memorize a whole chapter. And it was Psalms forty-sixth. And I had the most horrible time trying to memorize that until my mother told me, that's your grandfather's favorite chapter. Then it was very easy for me to learn. But the first verse of that chapter, I have lived by, I think, my whole life. And during this time of pandemic and the world upside down and not knowing what's happening with our society, the verse, Psalms forty-six one, "God is our refuge and strength, a very present help in trouble; therefore we will not fear." Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you have given us throughout this day. And tonight, Father, we're asking you to give the council wisdom and guidance as they make decisions for us citizens to live by. We ask, Father, not only give this council wisdom and knowledge, but our state officials and our federal officials. And then we would not forget to pray for our first responders, our law enforcement, and our military that protect us. Keep all of them safe and in the palm of your hand. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Doris Hoffman, for those words of inspiration. Thank you. Let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from Captain Allen. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for July nineteenth through August first. It is unfortunate and sad to report, but on July nineteenth in the afternoon, a shooting occurred in the four thousand seven hundred block of West One Hundred and Sixty-seventh Street. Unfortunately, one life was lost during this tragic event. LSD homicide detectives are conducting an investigation, and I'm sure this crime will be solved in the near future and the suspect will be brought to justice. On a positive note, however, violent crimes are down in the city. Robberies are down fifty-two percent, burglaries are down nine percent, and grand theft automobiles are down twenty-two percent. If you recall, last year, the city was hit with a rash of stolen cars that not only affected the city of Longdale, but the entire county. During the past couple of months, auto detectives have done a great job of investigating and closing down local chop shops. This is the reason why we have such a big reduction in stolen vehicles. Last, on July twenty-sixth, before midnight, W. Rodriguez took a report for a stolen vehicle, and shortly thereafter, he located the vehicle in a parking lot at Radondo Beach Boulevard and Prairie Avenue. The suspect attempted to flee from the vehicle. When a deputy tried to stop him, the suspect fought a deputy in his attempts to restrain him. Fortunately, the deputy was able to restrain him and handcuff him. The suspect was arrested for taking a vehicle without owner's consent and booked at South Austin Aggressions Station. This case shows the proactive police work deputies do after taking a crime report. As a reminder, tomorrow is National Night Out from five to seven P.M. Along with my deputies will be here to meet Longdale citizens, and I hope to see everyone there. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Are there any questions of the captain's report? Thank you for the -- just one clarification, Captain. You mentioned the vehicle thefts. How are we doing with the Cadillac converters? Remember, that was a --
Yeah, so Cadillac converters are actually, I don't think even had one this current month. If so, it may have been just one. So what happens is, part of the chop shops, like I think I mentioned a couple of months ago, we had detectives did a search warrant on a place, I believe it was in the Hawthorne area, and they came across some, it was like two hundred-plus Cadillac converters. So a lot of times, the vehicles were also being stolen for the purpose of Cadillac converters alone. So there has been a really big emphasis on, that we put on trying to locate chop shops and shut them down because that also has an additional positiveness in reducing Cadillac converter thefts also. So they've not only been down, not just in your city, but throughout countywide, and it's our trapping unit, if you've heard of them, they're the ones that are kind of responsible for vehicle theft as a whole, and they've been really active the last few months. So it has had a positive impact on stolen vehicles as well as Cadillac converter thefts.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
You are.
And thank your deputies for us. Thank you, sir. Let's move on to oral communications. Oral communications, you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to do so, we ask that you line up by the flag when it becomes your turn, if you would approach the podium. If you would start with your name, that would be most appreciative. At about two minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker. Yes, sir.
At the last city council meeting, the city manager touted what he called the success of this year's fireworks suppression plan. There's unclear what YOSIC he was using to declare this. From my perspective, our neighborhoods were bombarded for three or four hours with illegal fireworks. The success, the number of citations written. On the worst day of fireworks, July fourth this year, sixteen citations were issued. Compare that to July fourth, twenty seventeen, when thirty-nine citations were issued. Do you base success on the number of phone calls? The report I received indicated that July fourth received the most phone calls ever for illegal fireworks. It was so bad, the lodge commander was sitting and answering calls. Is this how success is measured? I appreciate the comment from Councilmember Cuevas on the question to see follow-up on mandating that the fireworks manufacturers contribute to the fire suppression plan as other cities do. The comments from Councilmember Hoffman Gorman echo some of the issues brought forth to this body for many years and are appreciated. The effect it has had on pets, on veterans suffering from PTSD, and the impact on the environment have been brought forth repeatedly over the years. Certainly, as mentioned, we are in a drought, and fireworks of any nature can be a catalyst for fire. The comment from another council member that if you don't have legal fireworks, one would simply turn around and buy illegal fireworks would be insulting to a law-abiding citizen as it implies that one would simply turn to criminal activities. The only study I know of that looks at the impact of illegal fireworks and the relationship to legal fireworks was completed by the Orange Kennel Grand Jury, a report that was previously distributed to this body. This study concluded that those cities that allowed safe and sane fireworks had an increase in illegal fireworks over those that did not, and recommended that these cities stop the sale of all fireworks. This study also concluded that those cities that allowed legal fireworks did little to encourage nonprofits to explore alternative sources of income such as car washes, cookie and candy sales, and business sponsorship. These are only a few of many alternative fundraisers. If these sales are for the youth of the community, the fireworks booths are manned by adults. Wouldn't it be better lesson for the value of a dollar if they had to earn some of these funds? I applaud the suggestion of a moratorium on fireworks sales. Just barge it if you choose. The recent online survey showed that of those that responded, majority wanted the end of legal fireworks, wanted the end of legal fireworks sales. The city council does have its power to issue a moratorium of safe and safe fireworks sales. As any passball initiatives on fireworks were advisory only. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Dina, City of Longdale. I just wanted to touch on the captain's safety report also. I'm glad he did mention that we did have a homicide, but I also wanted to know, how many homicides did we have last year? We didn't, we don't really ever say anything to let the community know that there's been a shooting or death or anything like that. We seem to be real hush-hush on them for some reason. Also, there was an incident, I think, at our target a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if it was a woman with a knife or a man with a knife. Again, we get no info on these, these things that are happening. We also just had a, I believe, an end of a pursuit that landed in Marine and Inwood Avenue with the sheriffs, I think, helped out Torrance or something. Nothing's mentioned about that. We all had to stay in place and stay inside, and helicopter went over for a good over hour and a half or something like that. I never see patrol still. Are we just patrolling the outer main boulevards, or do we patrol the other streets around here? I never see a sheriff around here, unfortunately. Also, the fireworks, again, there seems to be like a new competition going on that if one lights some off on Saturday night would just happen, and some other blocks started also. Again, by the time you call, I know there's nothing much they can do. Also, a lot of these souped-up vehicles just race through the neighborhoods and do these tricks or whatever. They set off call alarms and what have you. Somebody's definitely gonna get hit, whether it be a child, a pedestrian, a regular adult, or, you know, an animal or something. You know, that's all you hear, these raced up, you know, souped-up cars now, too. So I also appreciate Air Fifty-Five, it seems to patrol over my house way more than anything. I really appreciate the helicopter from the neighboring city that goes over my house more than anything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's bring up to the dice for any comments from the council. Let's hear from Councilwoman Suarez.
Good evening. Thank you to everybody that attended. I will just touch briefly on the sheriff's report. I know we do more of a quarterly meeting to kind of discuss what's going on in the city and how we're reacting to that. So I know that that, we go more in-depth with regards to crime and all that in the city, and we work with the sheriff's department. But I don't believe I can speak to what crimes they bring up in their report. So I can leave that up to the sheriffs if maybe they want to talk a little bit about that.
The south way. Councilwoman Cuevas.
Thank you, everybody, for speaking. As far as the fireworks, we have given Captain Allen a list of the areas where we have been seeing the fireworks show this past weekend. Hopefully, they could target that area a little bit more and give citations or take away whatever fireworks they have. That will be all.
Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman.
Thank you to both of you speakers. We are hearing you. As far as the fireworks go, and for anybody that is in the southwest area of Longdale that was very active on Saturday night, the city and the sheriff's department have been made aware that we were in a war zone again last Saturday night. Thank you.
Mr. Protem, Pat Kearney.
Okay, just one thing. Thank both of you for speaking tonight. Maybe if we get the sheriff's report, we could put it on our social media avenues. That way, you'll log in, you'll see it on our website. Hopefully, we did that end. With that, that's all for me.
Thank you, sir. I just want to mention, first of all, thank you for speaking, both speakers for speaking tonight. The sheriff, or the captain, does periodically give us a report on homicide rates. He does that from time to time. I believe, maybe a couple of months ago, he did give the homicide rate, and we definitely do it from year to year in comparison. So that definitely happens. Patrol, I'm not really sure which area that probably need more patrolling, or you might be suggesting. I'm dying, I know in my area, and there's also another area, that I do see an increased presence of patrol within the communities. So hopefully, they're patrolling within the communities on all quadrants of the community. So, but the captain is back there, so we hear you in those regards. And also the racing, yeah, that is annoying. We have, as you know, as some may know, I live close to Condon, and that street is, you know, I guess it's just a haven for people deciding to race up down Condon by the railroad's tracks or what have you. They come by sometimes, but obviously, it's hard to, you know, you don't know when they're gonna be scheduled, you know, a racist schedule or what have you. So hopefully, they can crack down on that as well, because that is a safety hazard, as well as a nuisance, you know, just hearing, you know, those loud, you know, cars. The fireworks issue has been pretty much explained pretty much, so I won't go into that. I do favor that.
Mayor Allen.
Yes.
Another concern is we're taking notes about the racing hot rod cars. Let's also put on there, too, the little mini bikes with these kids with no helmets on that are nearly side-swiping cars as they're zooming around the neighborhood. They're even brazen enough now to be out on Manhattan Beach Boulevard.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the scooters are back as well, too. Or if I hadn't beat, uh, the beach boulevard. I guess during the pandemic, you know, the little scooters and stuff, they was kind of suspending the use of those, but people are back to riding the scooters, and some people believe that you can ride them in the street on Hawthorne Boulevard, at least this past weekend, a few people thought that they could because they were taking up traffic, driving on the streets. So I don't think that's permissible, but maybe we'll take a look at that as well. All right, with that, that's all I have on the public comments and comments from the council. We will move our agenda to the consent calendar, which is item F. What is the body concerned, what is the pleasure of the body concerning the consent calendar?
A motion to accept the consent calendar if no one has any questions.
I have two questions.
You got a question?
I have two questions.
Okay, okay, let's hold your motion. Let's have a couple of questions.
Item number two. On the bus line, have we decided we're gonna go again this year? Have we had, Mike, have you had any calls about starting the Longdale Beat again?
Yes, thank you for your question, Councilman Kearney. Very few calls. I'm averaging maybe one or two calls a month, you know, asking when it's coming back, things of that nature.
Okay. I don't know if we did up the bus this year again. This, we started in this year, correct? If I remember correctly. If you plan on starting in twenty twenty-one, again, I know future funding, it tells you that it starts me on seventeen thousand per fiscal year based on full year revenue. But I don't know if we need it right now. All right, like you said, you only have one or two calls a month. I think we can.
Councilman, can you speak up a bit?
I'm sorry. I think we could skip this till next year, because if you only have one or two calls a month, it's probably the same one or two people calling you. And if you don't have two people, I wouldn't be paying. It's a contract for, uh, it's about Prop A money. Do we need the Metro, I mean, the Longdale Beat? I know it comes down later. I don't think we need the Longdale Beat at all this year. I don't think the council fails, but.
Councilmember Kearney, just for clarification, the item that's on the consent calendar, it's not related to restarting the Longdale Beat. This is with regard to funding that.
Prop A.
That Metro makes available to cities that do have transit systems. So the money that is coming back to the city is from a previous fiscal year. And what the report was trying to say is that in future years, when they look at our operations for, over the last couple of years, because we did not have operations going at that time, our funding will be much less. So, but you are correct, you know, and with Mike's information, there hasn't been a lot of requests for bringing back the Longdale Beat, so at this point, we're not looking at, we're not looking at, that's not the recommendation at this point to do that.
Okay, so we're not, it's more about the money than the beat, correct?
Correct.
Because what he was saying, our funding will be maybe next year, seventeen thousand per fiscal year from Prop A and Metro, correct?
Correct. It'll be lower in future years because our operations have, you know, dwindled to, you know, very little.
So we don't bring it back, we'll lose, we'll, under the seventeen thousand, maybe.
Right.
Okay. So we are looking to approve the, receiving the forty-nine thousand from Metro. That's what this motion is for.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, go with that one. And then accounts payable. This is for Julian. Let's put accounts payable on the, right, first page of the check register report. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The tenth line down says, L. Uniforms and Tailoring. We have uniforms and boots. Are these work boots? Because used to buy the Schuterie all the time, and I don't know if we're trying to hide something there or what.
No, these are work boots. These are steel toes, step resistance, electrical resistance, and those are the boots that we get for our employees who work.
So these are work boots, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, wait a moment. So this is the first batch of boots so far. Okay. And then last question down here is, I'll try a reminder. Are we almost done with them, or do we still have one of the boots? Kevin, you want to answer that?
I can help, sir.
Okay.
They are finishing a few code enforcement cases. They have completed all of the general litigation that they were working on, but there are, I believe, two or three code enforcement cases that are still outstanding, that they're winding down or taking to trial, and then they'll be done.
Okay.
But everything new, in fact, a new case came to our office last week. The transition is going pretty much as we had planned, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm sure you go ahead.
Entertainer motion to accept the staff report on recommendations on item two. I entertain a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Protem Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion from the consent calendar? CNN, I'm gonna ask the council to vote on the consent calendar.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on the agenda is public hearing concerning the adoption of a new facility's use fees for recreational class instructors. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. We're here to discuss, as the mayor said, adoption of new facility use fee for recreation class instructors, and the discussion's gonna be centered around AB five, Assembly Bill five, which was put into law January first, two thousand twenty. You know, it hits all different industries differently. We're here to just discuss the effects it has on our recreation classes. Most of our classes, we run in the community center with a contracted instructor to teach the material, not city employees. So the crux of the matter is trying to avoid employee slash employee relationships, and that's what we have to distance ourselves from. Now, the effect on the recreation class instructors are a few. Essentially, what the law does is requires the city to give the instructors as much control over their contract classes as they can. So things like not requiring them to be there a specific number of minutes before classes, things like that. Let them set their own fees, let them determine where they're gonna teach, what times, what days they're gonna teach, things like that. But there are other effects, specifically the way we've been paying contract instructors traditionally, for as long as I can remember, as long as I've been here, even in my former cities, probably three decades or so. It was based on a seventy-thirty split, where the instructor gets seventy percent of the total revenues, and the city retains the additional thirty percent. The second effect it has is the retention of, retention and recruitment of contract class instructors. So essentially, what we're doing here is we're trying to replace, we're coming to you folks for your approval to replace how the city is retaining its fees. Once again, we used to have a thirty percent retention of total class revenues. Now, we're suggesting that this fee is a, it's a switch-in fee, a new fee, a transfer of revenue from the thirty percent retention to an hourly fee that will charge the contract class instructors, so they'll actually be paying for the facilities they use to teach. And I think Mr. Murphy can do a better job of explaining that to me, but really, essentially, it doesn't look good to have your instructors using free building space under any circumstance. You know, there's a lot of other cities, larger cities, like maybe Irvine, some really large cities that still use recreation instructors, recreation leaders to instruct classes. Obviously, they're not gonna pay a fee to use those classes. When we set the methodology, we basically analyzed the fees that the instructors are paying us. We looked at the last two years of full revenue. You know, nineteen twenty doesn't really count because we were cut short in terms of full years of revenue. So we looked at FY seventeen, eighteen, and FY eighteen and nineteen. And we just tried to come up with a fee that is fair, something that isn't going to let the city retain more fees that they were under the seventy-thirty split and just make it fair. So we analyzed different types of fees. The fee that we came up that would replace the city's revenue, which is previously about twenty-three thousand dollars, we came up with twenty-five dollars per hour that the instructors, we would retain from the instructors for each hour of classroom space. On a full year of operations, you'll see on the spreadsheet we have attached to the agenda item, is based on a full year, meaning we have all of our instructors back, our department's running fully, which is typically about eight to ten, eleven instructors. Once we get back to that level, this revenue at twenty-five dollars per hour for each instructor for each hour will replace previous levels of income. And once again, that's when we get back to full operations, which is gonna take some time. And just the other small piece that I wanted to add is, the other thing that AB five does requires the city to contract with separate business entities. So the sole proprietor can no longer teach in Longdale because that is too close for comfort in terms of an employee-employer relationship. So what we've done is we've asked all of our contract instructors to convert to LLCs, and so far, we had three before, we've had two converts, we have five, you know. So we're still giving the previous instructors a chance to convert to an LLC or some other type of business entity so we can continue to use them. But it seems as though the fees that they have to pay and the hoops that they have to jump through cost a little more than some of them are willing to pay. And, you know, this type of thing hasn't hit all municipalities, but eventually, it'll be everywhere, and it'll be tough for a sole proprietor to teach under AB five without converting to a true business entity. And that brings us to our recommendation. Staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution twenty-one zero eight dash zero thirty-three, approving the fee of twenty-five dollars per hour for recreation class instructors' use of any facility for city-advertised and promoted classes to be held on city property. And staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. At this time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing at seven o'clock. The public hearing is now open. I'm gonna see if there's anyone here wishing to testify in this matter. Signify by raising your hand. Okay, so we won't take any testimony. It is now seven oh one, or we'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it up to the dice for discussion amongst the council. We heard the staff report. Anyone like to speak? Councilwoman Cuevas.
Mike, this is only for year twenty-two, twenty-three, or are we not doing twenty-one on your spreadsheet?
Repeat one more time, please. Thank you.
On your spreadsheet, you're showing us your FY twenty-two, twenty-three. Do you have anything for twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two?
We do. We, like, for example, we, I've ran some summer outdoor classes, three different programs. So at this point, I think our revenue is probably gonna be well short of what it would be during a normal summer session. I'm projecting that our revenue at the end of FY twenty-one, twenty-two might be fifty percent, depending on how many more classes we can add and participation levels.
And we already started implementing the twenty-five dollar?
No, we haven't. We'll start that effective the next billing station, billing session for the current classes, which are about the midpoint right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more comments? Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm, you know, the city can't do anything about this, but I'm just kind of disappointed that, you know, you usually have these individuals that, you know, part of their favorite pastime is doing instruction, you know, classes or what have you. Now for them to have to form an official legal entity, a limited liability, you know, corporation, I think it's really kind of a sad.
I think it's really kind of a sad case because it kind of defeats the purpose of a lot of instructors' purposes. They don't want to act as a corporation, providing services. They just want to provide services, you know, to the community and probably, you know, make a little change at the same time, you know, not, you know, to have a, you know, full-blown accountants. And of course, with LLC, of course, you got to comply with a whole bunch of regulations or what have you, unlike a sole proprietorship. That's just kind of disappointing. So I'm not sure if that's going to stipend our ability to attract or to recruit, you know, quality instructors and quality programs. Because I know some people just wouldn't want to just do that, you know, the formalities you have to go through. And I know LLC is less formality than if it was a C corporation or S corporation or what have you, but it's still a legal entity, neither the less, you know. So I'm kind of disappointed, but I guess that's nothing we can do about this. So you're saying that even if you have a sole proprietorship, not just someone just acting as an independent contractor, but they have a separate bank account, separate ID, although it is a sole proprietorship because they use a social security number in most of the cases. So that still doesn't constitute a separate entity from the individual, and that's why we require the LLC or some other type of corporation?
Yes. Yes, as sole proprietors, that have been seen as getting too many benefits, one being getting free classroom space and making the employer-employee relationship too close.
Okay. Well, that was my only observation on it. Anyone else have anything they want to add on? Okay, CNN, what is the pleasure of this body concerned with this item?
Greg, I'll make a motion to go and start the recommendation.
Okay, the motion's been made. If we go to, with staff recommendation to adopt the
I'll second it.
Motion's been seconded. Seconded. Let me say, the first one is being made by Pat Kearney and seconded by Shores. And any discussion on the motion? CNN, I'm going to ask the council to vote on adopting the resolution attached.
For item six, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, moving right along. Item seven, agreement with all city management services. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Lawndale's had a longtime relationship with all city management services, going on, from what I understand, potentially about three decades. And they've been our crossing guard provider for, outside of three years during that time, every single two-year contract, some years a one-year contract. But the contract ended on June thirtieth, you know. Theoretically, it ended before because of the pandemic, and we weren't, you know, assigned any costs or didn't have to pay the remainder of that contract. But we have negotiated a two-year contract with all city management services. And the new agreement has some of the same elements that it has for many, many years, just a couple highlights. The agreement runs August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, which is three weeks from Wednesday, is when school starts in Lawndale, through June ninth, two thousand twenty-three. So it's a twenty-two-month contract, in essence, and that'll be the final day, June ninth, two thousand twenty-three, of the academic two thousand twenty-three year. It won't include any summer school services, no after-school services, nothing outside of the ordinary AM and PM shifts on school days only. It only covers schools in the geographic boundaries of Lawndale. For example, we'll get a call once in a while, wondering why there's no crossing guard at Twain or one of those other schools that are in El Camino Village. It's only for the schools in the geographic Lawndale area. It still retains the same system of penalties that it has had for probably a decade or so for tardy guards or for missing guards. And it includes fifty-four hundred hours of service during the academic year, which is essentially three hours a day, times the maximum number of school days, which is one eighty. That's where you're going to get your fifty-four hundred dollars from. And that's a two-year contract for a total of ten thousand eight hundred years of service. Staff recommends that the city council approve a contract services agreement with all city management services incorporated for a term of two years, not to exceed two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, once again, for a two-year contract with all city management services. Staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you for that staff report. Are there any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, it's me again. How many crossguards are we hiring, and have we spoken to the school district to see if they need that amount of crossguards?
The school district in the past has been fine with our numbers. We're servicing ten crosswalks, actually, ten crosswalk locations, sixteen total crosswalks. You know, some crosswalks, they go different directions. One will go east-west, one will go north-south. For example, Prairie and Manhattan Beach Boulevard is one where one crossing guard will handle two. But the school has other people affiliated with the school, not the school district. Other parents have called and said, well, you know, you should add this crosswalk and that crosswalk. And there's lots of opinions out there on how many we should actually pay for in staff. But the school district has been comfortable with the same ten crosswalks as they have been. That hasn't really been negotiated, and neither side has really felt that there's anything that fewer are needed or more are needed.
Is there any way we could get a copy of where the crossguards are going to be located? Because there are certain areas that I know we have a crossguard, and it's not needed in those areas.
What I can do is, if this is acceptable with you, of course, we could provide that. But if we can let, and I can get that for you immediately, if you'd like.
No problem.
But along about a month into school, we'll actually have pedestrian surveys. The school district actually takes, records the number of people that cross, and we cross everybody, just not students, you know, just everybody that wants to cross. So after about a month, we'll have solid pedestrian counts, meaning how many people have crossed either way during the present school year, because it's going to fluctuate from year to year. Then I think we could look at that and determine, you know, do we need more activity at one crosswalk, you know, less activity another, or if there's a time to make changes, that might be it.
That would be good. And could we shorten or could we remove some crossguards? Or are we stuck with ten crossguards on the contract?
Well, yeah, this contract includes ten.
But could we tell them we only need eight, let's say, once we do the study?
That would have to happen in writing, you know, as a contract says, it's no verbal agreements. You know, I imagine Mr. Chen's office would work with the school district leadership on that to decide what we want to do, but it would be a contract amendment for costs, is what that would entail.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? You got one?
Yeah, I had a question, and this is not specifically to the contract, but are we continuing the subcommittee meetings for the school and the city, the district? Oh, I guess my question was, is if they're getting CARES Act funding and if any way with reopening school, they were in any way able to use some of that funding towards this? I mean, I don't think it's really COVID-related. It's standard, but I don't know if that's a possibility if we're doing ongoing, continuing talks with them. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. We had this company before we terminated their agreement because of building practices. Yet we're going to hire them again, and you said that one, I don't know if you have a crystal ball in your office, but how do you know there's no other services out of LA County? Because I know last time we had RFP, there was three. That's my first question. And I have to agree with Councilwoman Cuevas. We only need nine crossing sites. If you look in the back page shortly on the Gent Island, it's a list of them.
The last, the very last page.
We do not need the crossing guard at one fifty-fourth at both states. There's a crosswalk there. It is about as wide as this chamber. If the parents can't cross on those streets, well, you know, it's on the parents. Come on. We're not going to dime for the school to do this. Here it takes the hell out of me. We don't need that. Did you see it, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, is it too late to go RFP this to see what's out there? Or, like I said, do you have, we have a crystal ball that knows there's no other company out there in LA County? Because I don't like we terminated it because it was only his building practices, and now we're going to hire him back. And I know we hired him back later. Well, that's my question, so.
Yeah, so the question is, are we satisfied that they are the only company out there, and there's not another company? And the second one is, and I'll paraphrase it, can we have the contract to read up to ten locations? So if we determined that we don't need, we only need nine, and then for some reason, when we do the numbers, if we decide, oh, you know, we didn't need this one, perhaps we need another one. Instead of amending it, we would already be up to ten, but not subject to ten if we only need nine.
Or when we prepare for ten, no matter what? Over the contract period, okay, we decided nine?
Yeah.
Or if we go on with the contract that says ten, and sometime mid-contract, we can only go to nine? We're going to lose that six months, whatever it is, at ten?
No, because we're going to build them based on, there's like an hourly rate built into it that I saw, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we won't, you know, lose because we won't build them for those, well, we won't be built, I should say, for those hours if we go from nine, from ten to nine or whatever.
Mr. Mayor, members, and also Mayor Pro Tem Kearney, just to answer those two questions. First one regarding the other companies that may be out there. I, for one, am confident that ACMS is really the only competent company that's out there. There could be other companies that could do this service, but they don't generally do this as their primary business. And I think this city has had the experience I've had in other cities, working in other cities, where other companies have been tried to do this type of work, and they've not done it well. And I think that's the reason why Lawndale returned back to ACMS and why other cities I've worked for have done the same. So yes, I am confident about that, being your question one. Regarding question two, we can certainly go back to ACMS and ask them that question about limiting this to up to ten, and then if we wanted to reduce the number of locations, we could do that. I'm not sure, Greg, I'll ask the city attorney this question. Should we hold this item off until the next meeting? Or can we move forward with this with the provision that that change could be made?
I think if we approved the contract tonight, we would be approving Exhibit C, which does require ten locations, so we would be paying for ten. So if it's the will of the council that Ms. Estes and Mr. Chen and I negotiate further, then I would ask that you continue this item to your next meeting, giving us the two weeks to negotiate and bring it back to you.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I would suggest. Anyone else have anything?
Does that give us enough time prior to the start of the school?
It would be tight. Our next meeting is on August sixteenth. And school, again, it starts when, Mike?
Wednesday, August twenty-fifth.
Okay, so we'll have, you know, nine days or so.
Yeah, that's enough time. I mean, you can signal to them that, you know, it's not a matter of whether or not we're going to enter into an agreement so they can "staff up," quote unquote. It's just a matter of what the agreement is going to ultimately be. So they'll still notice the "staff up" in. Okay, with that being the case, and let's throw in objections, we're going to pull this from the agenda, and we will reschedule it for the next, the next meeting, if without any objection. Okay, so let that be the order. Okay, let's see, where are we now? We're now at item eight, award of contract for construction and construction inspection services. Let's have a staff report. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Excuse me. Our annual street improvement project, the purpose of that is to rehabilitate our badly damaged street and also to provide preventive maintenance to enhance the quality of our streets. This round, we will be addressing the Manhattan Beach Boulevard Service Row, which is just west of Prairie Road and the side streets, along with the segment of Hundred sixty-first Street and Hundred sixty-seventh Street. The project involves grinding an overlay of over a hundred and forty-two thousand square foot of existing asphalt and replacement of over twenty-two thousand square foot of the concrete sidewalks. As far as construction, council authorized the advertisement of bid back in May of seventeenth, and with the bid due date of June seventh, we received four bids with Sequel Contractor at nine hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred dollars, being the lowest responsible bidder. As far as construction inspection services, we released an RFP back in June tenth, and proposals were received. We received six, and we evaluated on July sixth. SA Associates provided the best proposal based on the, based on the all evaluator of the proposal. United Street chose SN Associates based on the firm's knowledge, the team's experience, and also their understanding of the scope of work that needs to be done for this project. As far as the cost breakdown of this, this project, it's on the staff report on page, page three, that the construction bid of nine hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred dollars with the Sequel plus fifteen percent contingency of hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and ten, four hundred and forty-six thousand and ten dollars, and inspection services by SN Associates at seventy-eight thousand, we estimate the construction cost to be one million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and ten dollars. As far as funding, the project will be funded by several funding, mostly SB one, CDVG, Measure M, and also the general fund. And the total fund that's available is one, over, just over one point four million dollars, which is in the current physical, physical budget. With that, staff recommends the council to award this construction contract to Sequel Contractor with an amount of nine hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred dollars, and award the construction inspection services to SA Associates in an amount of seventy-eight thousand, and approve the construction contingency of hundred and forty-six thousand ten dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one annual street improvement project. Now, with that, staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions on the report?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
It's me again.
It's okay.
Why didn't we pick infrastructure engineer or FCG consultant? One is sixty-two thousand, and the other one is seventy-three thousand. Is there a particular reason?
As far as inspection services, we were looking for the person who are able to do the job better rather than the cost-wise. As far as construction, this bid and specs allows them to, to do what is needed for our street. However, with inspection services, the quality of work is very significant. And based on the experience of the firm and the team, who's the inspector who will be doing the actual inspection, the qualification was much better for SN Associates than other firms.
Wouldn't be inspection the same, whether it's my company, your company, or Mike's company? Wouldn't we inspect the same way?
True, but if the inspector has twenty-year experience versus ten years' experience, those factors are what we decided on, on SA Associates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, it says annual street project improvement project was one million, four hundred and twenty thousand and change. Now, the project will cost probably one point two, is it, two hundred thousand dollar savings? Down at the bottom, where it has SB, gas tax, CDVG, Measure M, and they have general fund. Will that amount be reduced by a certain amount?
General fund has to be met. We need to commit to two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in order for us to receive all these different funds. As far as the extra two hundred and twenty thousand dollars with fund, what the staff will recommend is that this is twenty twenty-one, this is a catch-up from last year. So we'll have another street improvement project that's for this current year that staff will bring up around, I'll say, in November. that staff will bring up around, I'll say, November or December of this year. And with that project, we'll add another $200,000 for that project so that we could do more street segments for that particular project.
So the matching funds, no matter what the cost is, is going to be 284? Because I saw on our budget sheet, every major project was 284.
Correct. Our, our general fund matching fund is 284.
It's matching to what?
Matching to our fund that we get for Measure M, Measure R, and SB1. All those funds that we receive requires us to, for the cities to commit their fund to, to do street projects.
And I understand you mentioned to Councilwoman Cuevas, but you have somebody that has 20 years of industry and somebody that has 10. Well, I wonder if 10 might have more knowledge because, I'm going to say this right, younger than the older guy. I still, I have to agree with her that maybe we should have went with one or two before we went to three. I mean, 20 years of service could be, they said, well, they want to do a damn, not death that. But a 10 years out there, how's they can give things done? Because, and the past usually went through the most bidding. I just, I have questions like Councilwoman Cuevas does about why we picked this one?
Yeah, this is a professional services contract, so therefore we are, we were looking for a person that would be most qualified. And also the, the, the contract amount was factored in. Wallace and Associates are a very well-known inspection firm. However, their fee was just way over, over what the norm was, and that's the reason why they weren't selected.
So your, your point is, you went with somebody that had 20 years' service as to a person that tenure service, but you don't know his qualifications, you went with this 20 years?
No, what we did, we looked at different, all these different things. One is the firm who have provided these type of services and have successfully done so. And also we're looking at the team who are the inspectors and also the, the engineers that are supporting engineers that are providing the service. We looked at their expertise and their experiences. And also when they submit the proposal, they submit and they provide us with what their thoughts and what their understanding of this project and the scope, understanding the scope of those work. That, and plus the, the fee schedule, all that determines what contractor that we, we select as the evaluator of three, three engineers. And based on that, all three of us, we thought that.
Just on years.
I would just like to add, Pat, because this year at my street, we did get, and all through Gravilla, from 159th all the way out to Artesia, wasn't it? We were block topped. I have spent hours with Julian because I'll tell you, there at 167th and Gravilla, I have gone out into the street. And the previous job that we had done at this city, even though they were supposed to put, correct me, Julian, how thick were they supposed to be putting down? And they gave us, there were, in the middle of the street, we had less than an inch. I was calling it the crunchy area, right there, right in front of William Green. So that being said, my concern most is that the quality that we're getting, what we pay for, whether it be the least expensive or the most expensive guy.
If you're going to base it on quality of the 10, we can't do that.
Right.
Yeah, I get, I get his, his point. He's simply saying because one person has 20 years and the other one has 10 years, without actually knowing the qualifications of the 10 years, was those 10 years of quality service or mediocre service? It could be on par with the person, with the inspector with 20 years, but, you know, how would you know? How would you know that unless you just go by the reputation of the, of the firm? I think that's what Pro Tem is trying to speak to. Let's hear from Councilwoman Bernard Suarez.
I just had one question. Are you allowed to go back and ask them for a reduced price or, you know, bring up, like, you know, we had some of these bids or any kind of discount?
We could, if council desires to.
Well, let me, what was that again? I know you said it would go back and ask for a reduce.
Like negotiate, basically.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. Yeah, I mean, you could. Would you have to go back out for a bid?
No, we would, because we, we feel that S and Associate is the qualified, most qualified, and we feel that their service is needed. We'll go back and we'll request them to evaluate the fees a little further and cut the cost if, if necessary. And there's a possibility that we could do that, if council desires to.
Yeah, that definitely wouldn't hurt.
Would it be required by us to do that and ask them?
Well, what we would do, we would accept them as the, as the, award them the bid and we would instruct the staff to then see if they can negotiate.
And one thing is, is that as far as $78,000, that is, as far as their services, is we do pay them by, by the hour. So what they're saying is that is the $78,000 is the, is what they're, what they budget for this particular project. And what we could do is we could award a contract for $78,000. I'll go back to the, the council, to the, to the consultants to reduce the, find a way to reduce the cost and then report back and bring the amendment back to the, to the council if that's, if that's what we need to do right back.
Yeah.
That's all very doable, yes, that's, that's appropriate for a consulting contractor.
I think Councilwoman Suarez has a, a great idea and I think that's how we, we should move to, to adopt it. But with that provision that we try to lower the, the contract, lower our price of the contract from SA and Associates. Any more questions on this? Okay, this time I entertain a motion. Anybody want to, you want to present the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so the motion's been made that we.
I'll second it.
Award the contract to SA and Associates with the instructions to the staff to try to lower the, the cost. And it's been seconded by Pat Kearney. It's in the discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that, that we get it all.
There was three.
There are three.
There's three, yes. Make, make sure we state the three. One is approving the contract, another is the, the budget allocation. Let me see, let me go to it. What page is it on? Yeah, there's actually. Yeah, there's actually three. The word of the construction contract, as well as the inspection services, and also the construction contingency, which is $146,010 in the annual street improvement projects. So those three items will make up the, the motion. Okay, any more discussion on the, the motion? You're, you already seconded it. All right, council, please vote.
For item eight, the motion passes with Councilmember Cuevas abstaining.
Okay. Thank you, madam. Okay. All right, so we're now at city manager's report. Let's hear from the city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Just wanted to touch on two items for the community's benefit. First off, just to reiterate what Captain Allen brought up during his presentation. Very excited, tomorrow night will mark us the first time in over a year that the city is able to go back to putting on community events. And so tomorrow night, Tuesday, August 3rd, we will have our National Night Out event. And that will be from five o'clock to seven o'clock. And that will be right outside here in front of the Civic Center on Bearden Avenue. And it will be a, a great time as it's, as it's been in, in previous years. And it's an opportunity for our community to get to know our law enforcement and firefighters that, that work in our community. It'd be a chance to, again, to get to know them and understand the work that they do so that they're not just faces that drive their vehicles and trucks around, that they are, you know, we can, we can meet who they are and learn about the work that they do for the community's behalf. We'll also have other community groups that are, that will be out there to provide information on the work that they do in the community. And there will be some light refreshments available as well. So anyways, just invite all of the community to come out tomorrow night for National Night Out, again, from seven to, excuse me, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, right here in front of City Hall. And then also on Wednesday night, we will conduct our sixth virtual public workshop related to the general plan and Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan update. That's a process that's been going on for several months now. And this is an opportunity for the community to come out and provide input to our staff related to what they believe, what they see as their vision for the community in terms of development. So this is an important process that we're undertaking and we really need input from the community. We, we need the community to come out and, you know, show us that they, you know, care about the community and give us their, their thoughts about how the, the city should look like in the future as relates to development. So again, tomorrow night, virtual public workshop. And for more information on that, I invite anyone that's interested to go to the city's website. All right, that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Let's hear from Councilwoman Cuevas. Let's hear from Suarez first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one. I attended the South Bay Cities Council Government Board of Directors meeting. And I guess the highlight of that was discussions around SB nine, which is, it's a long process with the state and they're basically trying to eliminate a lot of local control. So I know one of the cities is putting on a Zoom on August 7th regarding the bill. I can't remember, 10:00 AM, I don't have the link, but I don't know if that's something we can get out to residents. It's just kind of to explain SB nine and 10 and the impacts it would have on the community, how the state's pushing for a lot more housing density. And I just feel like this bill particularly would impact our city. We have a lot of developers that keep an eye on here because of its affordability and their ability to make profits. So I feel like it's something that would definitely impact our city. So I highly recommend, if you're not familiar with that law, to, to look into it. And that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Now, Councilwoman Cuevas.
I don't have anything to report, but I have a question for Mike. Am I able to ask him something? Mike?
Yeah.
A friend of mine invited me to go to some exercise classes at Jane Addams Basketball Court. Are we having any classes at the basketball court?
Yeah, that's not emanating from us. That's not our, our program. It sounds like somebody's just putting something together. I'd love to hear more information about it.
It's on the weekend. It was going to be Sunday morning, but are the park rep, do we have anyone driving around checking on that?
Yeah, we have staff on weekends, yeah. We'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I don't know what, exactly what time, but I didn't know that there were some exercise class or something at Jane Addams.
Yeah, that's, that's not ours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Hoppin, go ahead.
Thank you. I just, I have nothing to report, but I did want to make a comment to citizens. I'm hoping everybody is noticing the absolutely wonderful effort on Caltrans part to start cleaning up along our freeway. One of the first things after being elected that residents were complaining about was the overgrowth that we have all experienced. And I'll have to tell you, what they're doing in cleaning up is absolutely phenomenal. I'm, I'm really excited. They're out there every weekend and they're hauling dump trucks load of stuff. And I can't wait till all of the city looks as good as the areas that they've already hit. So kudos to Caltrans and the city staff. And I look forward to our next meeting with Caltrans to see now how we keep it in the state that it's currently in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pro Tem, Pat Kearney.
I have nothing.
All right, very good. And I have nothing as well, but I do want to comment real quickly, Councilwoman, on the Caltrans. Yes, I see them out there as well when I ride my bike on the weekends or walk. And they, they're doing a fabulous job cleaning up the freeways. I also noticed on, I guess, Manhattan, Manhattan Beach, Manhattan Beach Boulevard, there's, that fence is always open or what have you. The other day, there was a lady out there, seemed to be an older lady. She had a broom. I didn't know what was going on. I was like, I don't know what's going on here. And then there was someone else sitting in the van. You know, so I don't know if she went to retrieve the broom and thought, you know, hey, this, she could use the broom? Or if she was sweeping? What was going on? Because Caltrans had already cleaned up, cleaned up the place and it's really looking, you know, nice as off ramps and stuff goes. Right, so I was just kind of puzzled as to what was really going on there. Was it just, in that same location, it was the same location where another gentleman, this was before Caltrans started cleaning up, decided he was going to take all the trash bags and put them on the curb. You know, and I, I never figured out what was behind that as well, so it's really kind of bizarre. But we appreciate if she was sweeping, you know, that was a good gesture, we appreciate that. But I don't have anything either. The only thing I attended was the, the usual water district meeting and there's nothing really reportable there, although it's important work. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one follow-up to city council member Suarez's comments. It, it reminded me, I did receive something over the weekend from the COG related to the town hall, virtual town hall meeting related to SB nine and 10. So there will be a virtual town hall meeting this Saturday, August 7th. And I believe that starts at 10:00 AM. We will put out information on our city communications platforms to let residents know about that. So if anyone is interested or concerned about those bills, they can attend that, that town hall meeting and get more information and ask questions and so forth. Thank you.
Good. Okay.
I did have, sorry, I did have.
Yes, ma'am.
One more comment to make, our congratulations, because I have to give a shout out to my alma mater. Congratulations to the U.S. Men's National Soccer Team and to my fellow Olympian, Jossie Zardis, on their gold cup win this past weekend.
Nice. Sounds good to us. That, that's the other school. The other school. Not the one. Not the one we affiliated with, but the one.
Well, we win medals.
I guess so. Okay, so the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, August 16th in the Longdale City Council chambers. It is now 7:41 and this meeting is adjourned.